Hey, it's five o'clock and a forum is present, so I will call the meeting order. And ask for a motion approving the board meeting agendas. So moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any movers?
Public numbers.
Public numbers?
There was something, it's same.
So that brings us to the policy review, E O five, the policy on displays. Okay, and I actually do have a question on this. Passive discussion, wasn't familiar with that term. I did some looking and maybe it's where people can write responses to things. Okay.
Sometimes the only thing to do was like calling the fountain balls or you could walk in this jar, that jar, and see what's going to go back.
You're in charge, it's gonna be colorful.
So we went to the passive discussion, I tried to imagine what that is. And I couldn't, I can't, discussion is, it's passive, I don't, that I.
I think it's a term in the industry, but I'm obviously open to what is going to make more sense to the public.
Yeah, examination. To engage the public in examination on topics, of topics relevant. I just, I'm passive discussion, that's too persistent.
Well, I just, I was stuck too, and I have to say, whatever my Google skills are, it was not immediately apparent after I started researching what passive discussion was it took. There were a lot of sites that had discussions of using the passive voice, that was mostly what I got. How about something like some interactive displays? Which could take lots of forms? I don't know exactly how to make that into a, into point G.
Thank you.
Oh, to engage the public, to engage the public through interactive degree, displays on topics relevant to society, something like that worked. And then you could have puffballs opposed, so whatever.
I really appreciate us looking at what our, for our experience become more important division. Much more of that, you're to have, which we would want, public libraries will find people to insert voice back, so thank you so much.
Go ahead. You go ahead, post revision, any other standing? I was gonna ask, Anne, did you make something happen?
Yeah, to engage the public in interactive displays on topics relevant to society.
Works for me.
Any other discussion, any other questions? I've got a motion to approve that it's revised.
I'll second.
And a second? All in favor? And any opposed? Okay. Which brings us to policy seven oh six, outreach and.
Other Sam.
I was gonna say, Sam, you got, you got the.
I've been hitting this.
You got the policies.
I missed you all, I want to make sure I keep that.
I would like the use of strategic in that first one, strategic partnerships. It's a canting word now, I think, and I think it can be eliminated. I mean, it's like in the university prestigious. If I hear prestigious one more time, if you have to tell somebody that prestigious, they're not prestigious. So those, those chanting words that just get repeated and that don't really mean very much. I'd say, get rid of them.
That makes sense, thank you for teaching.
Is, can, can thing, is that the word you're using?
Yeah, it, okay, yeah, yeah, it's, you know, something that's over, kind of jargon, overused.
So overused that it become empty, yeah.
So it becomes just, yeah, yeah, noise.
I'm gonna start using that word, thank you.
Until this meeting was.
Right, until it's canting.
Any other suggestions or questions? Sam, anything that stood out particularly that you want to speak to?
I just appreciate when we, you do talk about like the heavily, I play one of the words handling point seven on six, point now six. It's, it is, it's engagement, right, and I think that that's a little bit easier for a library to define. And then we also borrowed language from our programming. Policy, I thought that that's a healthy way of making sure that it is consistent across the board, whether you're in the building or outside of the building. So I appreciate the inclusion of that money.
That makes sense, that makes a lot of sense.
But beyond that, yeah, thank you.
I'm ready to, no one has more, and ready to entertain a motion to approve the policy. Strategic stricken summit. It's, I have, it's, both are seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, we come to election of officers. Rock, nominating committee will present a slate, and the board will take action. So, John, do you report to the?
I will. Of the people who voted, not everybody voted, but the people who voted overwhelmingly, they voted to ask the present officers to continue for another year. So I, we don't have any new nominations to make because the consensus was so strong that we didn't need to. Things were going well and we didn't need to change it, so that's pretty much.
Okay, so the slate proposed is Anna for secretary, DJ for VP, me for president. The bylaws allow for nominations from the floor, so if anyone is so moved, could hear a nomination.
That's what you get for doing a good job.
Yeah. Just wait, that is interesting. Think I know how to get out of this now.
And have four hour meetings starting to.
That's right. Then I would entertain a motion to approve the slate proposed. I'll move for that. Second?
Will second it.
It's been moved and seconded. And I'll see, all in favor? Aye. And opposed, so we shall, we shall continue. Okay, now we've got third quarter statistics and financials.
Here's one thing to kind of swap out, we gave you a very internal document called circulation by location code, which is very much, gets really into very detailed reports, we use it for certain things, but it's giving you this, the circulation by type and formats, we could do more home sit here with my collection.
Should we start with the financials and then move on to the circulation reports? Questions about the financials? First of all, mates, is there anything more we should be doing for budgeting for Allen? Before the old repair and maintenance, I'm just wondering, is that allowed with the overages that out and etcetera, and it's just bad luck?
It's just, those are just chargebacks from the city. So we don't really, we have a budget line and then I think next. And we just had a few things this year that, the bookmobile is five years old, so we're starting to see where it's carrying it.
Throw one, do bookmobiles usually that?
Totally. I think most 20 years of the industry would suggest that it's supposed to be 12 or 15. It really just depends on the investments that you make if you find like this. But then also, it would be reflective of like 32, how we warn for this bookmobile, whether or not they're a three or models, when they're looking though as the model. So you asked, and I love talking about this because I'm fine at parades and time, so it's on. I really do think 12 or 15 years is the industry standard and that's all relative to what exactly you think you want in place to, right? Whether that's a branch or a bookmobile or a downtown library.
And the city does have a fund called the replacement vehicle fund, money is going in there yearly to kind of cover when, when the time comes.
How many miles do we put on that a year as Brooklyn average? Do you have any idea?
It's, it's fairly low, I want to say it's somewhere in the ballpark of about 250, and that's because we have those fill stops, right? So that, that's actually like our longest jump down, but we're like Mr. Rogers, we really keep it in the neighborhood. And then it's operational thought of the sudden operational there, so we can, in mostly come that's advanced.
You said 250? Is that miles, 250 miles a year?
Something in the fashion, because it's lengthy. Are we worried, so that's closer? But we got to, when I come back.
Yes, curiosity, I mean, I, it, in some ways helps you estimate the life, but, but like as far, but it's not the guarantee.
It's longer than one little shoe.
I mean, we're at year seven, actually, I mean, but it is off, we just all rate. Year seven.
A bookend where we are mile to year.
And I might be conflating which. See back to the construction or in the city?
I never stop being.
It can't have been the last one.
You were the last, like.
There's no.
So I'll figure that out, Lawrence. I'm sorry, Ms. Ricky said. I did that.
Other items on the financials, which I will repeat what I said last time you presented, I think the format is, is right, right there for me. My attention to the right places.
The committee did meet, the mass committee did meet.
Yeah, please.
With, and I don't think we have anything particular to report.
There was a. We don't see anything really out of the ordinary, I think.
The, the overages got explained to us pretty clearly. And, and basically things seem to be pretty, in pretty good shades. I mean, they're, they're, the overall budget is about where it ought to be. So you have the long range.
Right, okay. This is interesting because honestly, I, it sort of slipped my mind, had a finance committee operating, and maybe that we'll adjust the agenda and have the finance committee present here or something. Okay.
Alan, do you, okay, Simon's on a bookmobile right now. The current bookmobile mileage right now is 30,781.
What?
30,000 miles.
So I want to divide that by seven, okay, so I got the generator issue number, so we're talking about someone ballpark of 400 miles. Because we've all been out in operational for seven, that was a little, that was a big 250, I'm glad you were.
It did.
Okay, I got almost a thousand.
My blood was your, you know, that's easy to think, why, you thought we were only 250.
But that is interesting.
Maybe that will be clean.
Oh. No, sorry, I forgot to divide through. I was thinking that it was gonna be an awful lot of miles by the time we got to 12 or 15 years, but it's, it's really.
Well, I'm gonna carry to continue in this vein longer, but there's also like those weeks and breaks that we take too, so I can, I can get inspired.
I mean, I suspect the bill will be outdated before it's worn out.
Who makes up?
There's like three major land fractures and I had like, what's really nice too is that the bookmobile association's president lives in Iowa, so we talk about these things a lot. If we knew exactly what we wanted, colored the carpet, size of everything, and we signed on dot today, it would take 18 months to, to get that here. Yeah, so Sabbath is, I think, the largest of the three land factual ones.
That's your beat ours.
And they're in Calabro.
There's nothing else on the financials, invite questions and comments about the circulation maybe, Anne, as you would point us.
Yeah, I attended during public library association conference, an urban library council collection development summit. And we talked a little bit about developing world languages collections, how are we trying to pay for digital materials and keep a robust print collection? And then we also talked about kind of when do you get rid of A V materials when you make that decision? And what was interesting to me is although we're down in print, those libraries, some of the larger libraries like San Francisco, New York Public Library, Brooklyn Public Library, are seeing drastic reduction in use of print, probably because of the way that people are working now. Less people are working in downtown New York or going, or in New York City is closed two days a week now. So they're seeing huge losses in their print circulation, so we are not seeing that in the same way that some of the larger libraries are.
What's their baseline for that? Because I'm thinking the COVID patterns, all these, these distribution slots. And so I'm just wondering how part that they.
They were comparing the COVID. We've seen it bounce back. And those libraries are also working on a strategic plan that involves, one of the number one priorities is bringing people back into the building.
I'm sure the questions. Circulation is one of the statistics. In terms of you could think about certain areas jumping up or down.
Magazines are way up and that has made a minor change where you can check out the current copies for every magazine except for a news image magazine. People are loving it.
Moving on, quickly move on to staff reports, starting with the direct report. Don't be, if anything, to add to what else?
I don't, we should have Bonnie, by, oriented for next meeting, so we have that scheduled.
Almost hasn't scared her. Was, was that intended as a, as a motion that we could all? That's a lot scare off.
Well, we can't vote on it if it's not on the agenda.
Did anybody have any questions on the director's report? Elsewhere's not here, no hand can answer us pretty much anything.
I must, they, I, I've been very confused about what day it is, I read his out of office dates, I was like, but he just told us he was gonna be out last week. Thought it was a second instead of.
Okay, well, we can move on to, what's the departments, we've got children's services. Yeah, go ahead.
During the solar eclipse, it was so wonderful to stand in the ped mall and see just droves of people all wearing the same exact solar glasses that they got from us. It was wonderful.
It's just exciting because she's in very corner of that picture and not.
Yeah, but just stay out.
After we ran out, I just ran around waiting for anyone who was staring directly at the sun, that class we gave.
We learned adults not actually should know.
And the versus.
At 2000, we held a thousand back, we gave away a thousand at the wing leading up to it, and then held a thousand back and. They're giving me bad case of deja vu, and like the Friday before the event, they're like, we're just gonna have so many left over, we're gonna have so many left over, let's just start giving them away, and I'm like, no, no. And then, yeah, so.
Well, now reference does get, and then they're not nearly at the same level of the way they live. And the answer is, there's like one organization that claims they will take them, if you look at the fine print. Maybe you should just hold on to the next story. Or even better one is to take out the little inserts and cycle.
Or they work, but much.
That's a really effective solar glasses.
Yeah, they're, they don't have extra ridge and they're long series. It's up to check for scratches.
That'll give my next report summary reading all the years then.
Yeah. Okay, any questions or anything you want to add to the collection services department?
Okay, just answering questions.
Finding a little appetite for conversation, we'll move on to the IT department reporting. They can't wait to do the scavenger hunt. Next thing that the media transfer stuff is so important, and I was glad to hear that it's really heavily, it sounds like it's really heavy. Yeah, someone's sitting with a drawer full of mini DV, he is wondering what's on there. Right here, go to the library. Yep, Malacan.
Yeah, the person just at four o'clock with the 16 millimeter film, an eight millimeter film, the eight millimeter cassette, audio cassette, and then a VHS cassette. Wow, that's gonna make me help them absolutely, right, though. She made him pretty happy.
It's something priceless too, I mean, the things where I, I can make for people, it's enormous, yeah. I think we can move on to the development department support. You have any late breaking, anything you want to add?
We've seen a lot of generations of books, we get more access of books for our June book sale, and the public has been responding with donations, so it's been exciting. So we've been running, running ourselves, ragging, sorting through those. And that is, not included in this report was the announcement about the foundations, we partnered with. Stay near the bar. Landfill, I really, landfill. The landfill had been recycling all books that were not out to the landfill, and I started a conversation with the landfill over sixteen months ago to talk about how we might be able to divert some of those books from recycling, we'll save the landfill some money and instead some reusable books to our new partnership with Thrift Books. And I believe we received a check for six or $700, and now their check for $100 is actually one of them. And we created some guidance for people around how to donate those books at the landfill, how to self, self-sort those. And if we go at this rate, I imagine on the anywhere between, you know, nine million dollars and typical this. You, they actually, what's up?
How'd you come up with that?
I would just, well, you know, actually I did the city of Iowa city climate ambassador training. And it really gave me a good, you went to city operations and I was looking for opportunities. Now, that one came up pretty right away and I started that conversation with them, so I'm pretty excited about it. And they are too.
That's beautiful, that is so cool.
Why is the match $10,522 since 2014, such a sacrifice, the public donated millions to charity, donations?
All right, so actually in fundraising, round numbers, we don't inspire people as much as donors do. So when people have a capital pool, you know, exactly, you know, they're just like, you know, but people go, is that real? How could it possibly cost exactly $3 million if one is $2,998.56, people say. Clearly did the work and figured out how much this is. So that's, that's the real number, what people don't need to buy.
And I think that it's a student residence report. Where I am to appoint members to the foundation board, and despite the confidence you've shown in me, I totally forgot all about that. So we will do that next month, Gemma assures me that that's legal, so.
Nobody volunteered, probably.
Nobody has volunteered, so I, and I did ask at our last meeting for volunteers and didn't hear from anyone, so it will not be.
It's a great time to nominate people who are missing.
Maybe that's it, maybe I'll just Claire. And it could also be welcome to Bonnie, you know. I will recruit a couple of members. The other thing I just, I want to report is that I accepted an appointment to the United Way Board of Directors on the understanding that they met on the third Thursday of the month, this month and next, they've moved that to the fourth Thursday, so. And it meets from four to 5:30, so I will either hustle over here in time for the next meeting or ask Derek to run part of the meeting depending on what the agenda is, that meeting. And then we'll run into the skin in November, in December when we move our meeting to the third Thursday, so it should, it should work out. Are there any announcements from members? Many of the committees have anything to report, we've, we've heard from finance advocacy is kind of. Yeah, it's quiet, right? Foundation, or our foundation board representatives, that's what I call, can't see any reason I could continue. Anything to report, y'all? No, nobody, that never meeting yet. Did I skip one? No, that's her. Okay, communications are included in the packet, our consent agenda as usual, minutes of our last meeting on approval of the dispersments as twenty four. So do we need to remove anything from consent agendas? Yeah, and sort of have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed, and let's see what we're doing next month. They are doing the event board and community relations, adult services and community access service. And we will also do appointments to the foundation board. Having completed our business, I adjourn the meetings.
Don't trust me.
Thank you all.
You know, the needs of the. I don't want myself, here, I'm just kidding.
I don't think I'm gonna be doing. I don't think I'm gonna be doing one. I'll send an email when we're close.
Okay.
Reminding.
Okay. You served on the.
And that's. For years, I'm the one that's happening. The last break.
She know.
She's been. I see. Battle. Like, I think. I'm too light as a feather, it's fine, right? I don't know if anybody else, but it works. Yeah, she didn't, she knows. And it's like, so I, you know, I'm still, you know, sorry, it's right, this is what we do at first, and she's.
How was she?
From her, she's more than one. And I have some.